Good evening. I am Kim Melnick, Vice Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM on this ninth day of August 2022. Public seating will be made available on a first come, first served basis. Members of the public will also be able to observe the special school board meeting through live streaming on www.vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Present in school board chambers is Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Weems.
And Ms. Riggs walking in. Okay, excellent.
And Ms. Riggs.
Okay, and for the record, Mrs. Rye is still en route from South Carolina and should be here soon. Oh, and tonight we have our Chief of Staff, Dr. Robertson, in for Dr. Spence? Who's out of town right now?
Yes.
Yes, he is out of town. All right, if you would all, please join me in a moment of silence. And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal rights and liberty and justice for all.
This is not it. Thank you.
This evening, the school board-
This evening, the school board has the pleasure of recognizing division students, teams, and staff who have been awarded or recognized during state, multi-state, or national competitions or events. Number one, Kellum High. Who is that?
Kellum High 100 Butterfly Class 6A State Competition. Our first honoree this evening is a recent Kellum High School graduate who won first place in the 100 Butterfly 6A State Competition. Please welcome Emily Clausen. Emily's high school swim career culminated at the 21-22 state championship, where she was on two relays, placed second in the 50 freestyle, and became the state champion in the 100 Butterfly. She earned 37 points and helped to place the girls' team 13th, the highest in school history. She is a six-time All-American and Kellum's Most Decorated Swimmer, holding three individual team records. She qualified for the Olympic Trials in 2021. Wow. Making it to finals in the 50 free. Emily will continue swimming at Virginia Tech. Congratulations, Emily. We are so proud of you.
Our next honoree this evening is also a Kellum High School student, a rising senior, who placed first in Division 6 states for his 145-pound weight class. Please welcome Owen Cherry. Owen was Kellum's MVP for the season, winning both the region and the state title. According to one of his coaches, Owen's level of dedication is shown throughout his history with the sport. He believed in his teammates, coaches, and himself to reach his goal of becoming a state champ as only a junior. He is an inspiration to the rest of the team and has helped to motivate the team for the future of this program. Congratulations, Owen. We're proud of you. Way to go.
And our next honoree this evening is a rising junior from Kellum High School, who was recognized as a first-place winner in the storytelling category at the state VHSL Forensics Competition. Please welcome Ivy LaPrezy. Ivy, a rising junior at Kellum High School, attended her first forensics meeting thinking it was forensic science, not realizing it was forensic public speaking. However, after hearing about the 10 categories in forensics, she decided she would try the storytelling category, where you must act out all the characters in a published children's book. She created different voices and postures for all eight characters in the book. When she competed the very first time at the regional meet, she won third place. She went on to win second place at super regionals and at the state competition. She brought home the very first first-place medal in storytelling at Kellum High. Congratulations, Ivy. We're proud of you.
And wow, this is a great night for Kellum. Kellum High School of Virginia Law Related Education Mock Trial State Winners. Our next honorees this evening are statewide winners from the Virginia Law Related Education Tournament. Please welcome Isabella Painter and Jenna Morris. Kellum's team competed with more than 40 teams from Virginia and Washington DC. Isabella was named the top witness in the state with a perfect score. That means every judge in every round scored her first. Out of all six witnesses competing in that round, Isabella played the role of an expert medical witness, and she had to master highly technical information and be prepared to defend her statements against cross-examination. No one was able to break through Isabella's knowledge and confidence. Jenna was named the top attorney in the state with a perfect score. That means she scored first out of all six attorneys competing in each round. Jenna was the closing attorney for the plaintiff's side, which meant she had to adapt to the events in the round and compose her closing arguments with just a few minutes of preparation time. Congratulations, Isabella and Jenna. We are proud of you.
Next, we have Cox High School Field Hockey VHSL Class 5 State Champions. Our next honorees this evening from Cox High School, and I'm so happy to see so many of our Cox High School champions here. The team members are Irma Gray Bailey, Zella Bailey, Rose Bannon, Elizabeth Braithwaite, Sophia Birch, Reeves Caporici, Mackenzie Durr, Addison Frolic, C. One Leathers, Emerson Miller, Ava Ostrowski, Addison Parker, Avery Parker, Lauren Sanford, Josephine Savino, Emerson Schwartz, Abigail Spear, Megan Spear, Elise Unger, Assistant Coach Alex Brewer, Assistant Coach David Hahn, and Head Coach Taylor Roundtree. Cox Field Hockey had a very successful 2021 fall season, winning their 23rd state championship and their second state title in one calendar year, finishing their season with a record of 20 to 0. Cox outscored- The Falcons outscored their opponents 113 to 3. The win gave the senior captains four state titles in four years. Cox Field Hockey was led by five seniors, Abby Spear, Ava Ostrowski, Emma Schwartz, Quinn Braithwaite, and Zella Bailey. These seniors were an inspiration to their teammates and to the young girls in our community. This state title was a complete team effort by all 19 members and their incredible families and friends. Congratulations, Cox High School's Field Hockey Team. We are so proud of you.
Next, we're going to recognize First Colonial High School for being Debate Team State Champions. Our next honoree this evening is the First Colonial High School Debate Team. Please welcome Jason Zhang, Josie Williams, James Nicholson, Alex Elstrode, Jacob Cruz, Elena Spencer, Emily Labarre, Savannah Newell, Hannah Flax, Seth White, and Coach Jim Godfrey. The First Colonial Debate Team captured the 2022 VHSL Class 5 State Debate Championship in April at James Madison University. This is the sixth state debate championship for First Colonial since 2014. It was a total team effort. Outstanding achievers include Jason Zhang, who won state champion in Student Congress, Josie Williams, who earned second place in Student Congress, and James Nicholson, who earned third place in Student Congress. Jacob Cruz also added some much-needed points by earning third place in Lincoln Douglas Debate. Congratulations to First Colonial's Debate Team. We are proud of you. Great job.
Okay. And our final honoree this evening is from my alma mater, Ocean Lakes High School. And so I'm not sure if she's here, but we are going to celebrate Brooke Gunter, the VHSL State Girls Pole Vault Champion. She's not here, but that's okay. Brooke placed first at the VHSL 6A State Track and Field Meet with a vault of 10 feet 9 inches. Brooke is also a state champion gymnast, placing first on the uneven parallel bars and the vault in the 2020 VHSL State Championship Gymnastic Meet. She is the first person in Ocean Lakes' history to win state championships in two different sports. Congratulations, Brooke. We are so proud of you.
Okay, and now we will adopt the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Okay. So, hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion, Ms. Hughes, second, Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Madam Vice Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
All right, we have no superintendent's report tonight. So, approval of meeting minutes. Are there any modifications to the July 18th and 19th, 2022 School Board Retreat abridged school board meeting minutes as presented? All right, hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the minutes as presented. All right, motion by Mrs. Riggs, second by Mrs. Franklin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Vice Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K-12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon, by noon today. Persons not called to the podium to address the school board are requested to be respectful of speakers, so the school board and persons observing the meeting are able to hear and observe each speaker's comments. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first speaker?
Thank you, Vice Chair Melnick. Our first speaker will be Paula Chang, then Heather Comer, then Jill Blake.
Good evening, Mrs. Chang.
Good evening, Ms. Melnick. I want to say hello to the board and to Dr. Robertson, because I understand that some here may actually, it appears, be more offended by the term porn peddlers than by the actual fact that pornography is passed around in our schools, and that has been proven by the fact that some of the books in the schools have already been removed. So, but I'm actually not here for that. I'm here at this theater of absurdity, such as that was, and under the direction of Chair Rye and Chair Melnick, and as I apparently understand, directed by Ms. Anderson, to speak on the fourth change this board has, since this board has been elected, to Bylaw 1-47. The other changes to this bylaw were made on May 11th, July 20th, and September 28th, 2021. These changes last year were part of the ongoing assault by this sitting board to silence parents and citizens who objected to some of the violations of parental rights, lowering of academic and behavioral standards, sexualizing of children, and the content of material presented in the Virginia Beach public schools, as well as the masking. So, in other words, they are unreasonable tactics against reasonable people questioning reasonable things. Tonight's assault and input takes away the public's right to speak about and have broadcast items of concern to them, but not listed on the agenda of this meeting. Ms. Melnick and Rye, it appears that your goal is to limit the agenda to keep the public from discussing different items, such as pornography, the exodus of teachers, which is largely becoming evident as having to be impacted by discipline problems, the objections to collective bargaining, the board's own abrogation of their responsibilities to the superintendent, the superintendent's use of regulations to limit parental and citizen book challenges and parental oversight of curriculum, the overspending on buildings of schools, the wasted taxpayer money on sole-source contracts, the millions of dollars spent on Dr. Spence's administrative staff, while we found out some overnight janitors make only $11.99 an hour. Ms. Melnick, Ms. Rye, and Ms. Anderson, it appears you do not want these items to see the light of day, so they are silenced by the change to this bylaw. So absurd is tonight's bylaw change that it actually is a reversal of one last year, when you all, in an attempt to silence us, put together the agenda and non-agenda items together and allowed us to speak. And this rule apparently had the opposite effect than was intended. The public followed the changes using the rules, and you see it now as almost like a loophole that allows people to speak about things you don't want to hear. So, you're here tonight to tighten it up and close that loophole. You act as if you're here to protect the students. Apparently, Ms. Anderson, you think it's to protect the staff, but it's not. It's to protect yourself. Nobody is fooled. This is absurd. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Comer, then Jill Blake, then Sarah Gerloff. Welcome, Ms. Comer.
Hey. Good evening, Coach Chairs, Ms. Rye, Ms. Melnick, Dr. Robertson, school board members, some other friends in the room. So, my name's Heather Comer. Some of you, I know you. I grew up in Virginia Beach. I attended Fairfield Elementary, Council Meadows Elementary, Council Middle School, and Council High School. I love Virginia Beach. I attended college, and then I came back, and I still live in Virginia Beach. After college, I came back. I've been teaching in Virginia Beach for 27 years. You can clap. It's okay. Yay. Really. Came into teaching in my early twenties. I know. I've had a great career and have a lot of years ahead of me. When you start teaching in your twenties, you teach over 30 years. The step scale, as you know, stops at year 30. My paycheck will no longer grow at year 30 and beyond. The pay increases stop at step 30. And yet, my teaching career will continue. I will continue to empower students. I will continue to attend VBCPS-sponsored professional development, and it's awesome. I will continue to grow as a teacher. Yet, my paycheck will freeze and stagnate. What message is VBCPS sending about the value of seasoned teachers? What message is VBCPS sending to teachers who, like me, start teaching in their early twenties, as several of my colleagues in this room have, as I work with them? I'm asking the board, Dr. Spence, Dr. Robertson, so many, to revisit the 30-plus scale and add years for all the teachers who started teaching in their early twenties and made Virginia Beach City Public Schools a career and want to stay teaching in Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jill Blake, then Sarah Gerloff, then Stephanie Lisicki. Welcome, Ms. Blake.
Hi. My name is Jill Blake, and I'm a librarian at Bayside High School. I'd like to talk to you tonight about mirrors. That is a very simplified way of explaining some of what we do in collection development. Mirrors are books that reflect the reader's experiences, where they can see themselves in the story. My job is to make sure every child can find a well-crafted, high-quality mirror on the shelf. Every child. Not just the ones who look like me or believe the same things I do or have the same experiences. Every child. Including the ones whose stories make me uncomfortable or challenge my assumptions or break my heart. Every child. Because I know when they find those mirrors, when they see themselves in those stories, they also find reassurance and strength and hope. There is a political faction in this country right now that is working against that very idea. They circulate lists of targeted books. Books that tell the stories of people unlike themselves, stories that they have deemed inappropriate. They post excerpts from those books. Excerpts that are designed to enrage when taken out of context. Excerpts that allow people to challenge the books without having to read them for themselves and form their own opinion. They are weaponizing libraries and librarians in their battle to control everyone's choices. They call us groomers, pedophiles, and porn peddlers. They suggest we be fired, arrested, and, in one very memorable post, stoned to death. They create and encourage an atmosphere of hostility and distrust to frighten people into believing that we have some kind of dangerously radical agenda. Well, let me repeat my dangerously radical agenda. I want every child to find themselves in my library. I want them to find mirrors so that they know they're not the only ones, and they know that they can survive whatever is happening to them. And then I want them to find each other's stories, so that when they find each other in reality, they meet not from a place of judgment or fear, but of understanding and respect. Because children who respect each other become adults who respect each other. And adults who respect each other can solve problems even when they don't agree. Actual problems that need your attention.
Our next speaker is Sarah Gerloff, then Stephanie Lisicki, and then Angela German. Welcome, Ms. Gerloff.
Thank you. Okay, so Spence has recently suggested that the, that we, the parents, no longer be allowed to challenge the obscene books in our schools. Who is supposed to be in charge here, anyway? Spence supposedly works for the school board, so why are you allowing him to make decisions? Since Spence is not elected by the people, he actually has no authority to make decisions for our posterity. It seems as if Spence is a cult leader, and some of you are drunk on his Kool-Aid, and are allowing him to poison the minds of our children with his Kool-Aid. It is, and always has been, a federal crime to distribute, sell, and transfer obscene material to minors. It is also unconstitutional since it causes trauma to the developing minds of children, which is damage to one's property, a trespass against us. We have already witnessed the mental damage these books have caused. Over 60 obscene books have been found in our schools, and they ended up there because of Aaron Spence. Certain members of this school board have allowed this evil to perpetuate by not attempting to stop this evil. It is the duty of our elected representatives to protect our God-given unalienable rights. Certain members of this school board have not been protecting our rights, but have been infringing upon our rights, thus violating the highest law. Over 60 books have been distributed to thousands of minors to see. I would say it is time to book Spence for multiple counts and for being a repeat offender. I am not even sure why we need a superintendent in the first place, especially one that pushes porn and whose behavior is indicative of a groomer. With his excessive salary, he is just sucking the money out of the coffers that could be paying the people that deserve it. Just part of big government. Many of us have spent our valuable time speaking out at school board meetings, emailing school board members, researching the books in our schools, working on the recall effort. For those of you at home wondering what you can do to help right the ship, I have an idea. I have left a detailed letter with Chief of Police Paul Nutigate at the first precinct regarding Spence's criminal activity. Please take your time and call Chief Nutigate to ask him when, not if, but when Aaron Spence and certain members of the school board will be arrested for violating federal obscenity laws. Remember, the police do work for us, and it is their job to enforce the real laws and treat everyone equally under the law. That's Police Chief Nutigate. Please call him and ask him when he will arrest these criminals.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Lisicki, Angela German, and then Melissa Luksen. Welcome, Ms. Lisicki.
Thank you. I'm just here making a delivery in person. Okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Angela German, then Melissa Luksen, then Colleen Clementson. Welcome, Ms. German.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Angela German. I'm currently a school librarian, former English teacher, and Citywide Teacher of the Year. Working for Virginia Beach City Public Schools has been my life's work and passion and something for which I've been extremely grateful and proud. I've worked in several schools and taught and coached students in our division, grades 2 through 12, and my own children attend our schools and have been afforded the opportunity to learn and grow from some of the most amazing teachers, my colleagues, and I thank them. We are now embarking on one of the most magical times of the year, the start of a new school year. As we stand at the cusp, let us pause, reflect, clear our minds, step away from misinformation, and when needed, ask questions. Ask those with experience, knowledge, and training, so that we may embark on the new school year with focus on learning, both academic and socially-emotional. Let us not be confused by people and statements that seek to distract from our work. Statements galvanized by colleagues, because those who sit on the board are colleagues. They're actually unprofessional and slanderous comments, very hurtful. Teachers, administrators, educators of all kinds, put students first. Not just on social media during the school day, but in the evening, nights, and weekends. We continually strive to know better and do better for our students. We want to do the work with which we are tasked, trained, and impassioned to teach your children. So, let us and help us, support us. I see a lot of T-shirts, posts, and talk about values and being kind, so let us now practice that. Our students, parents, and community members are reading these posts, listening to the conversation, but only often soundbites are transmitted, phrases like those we've heard tonight. They are insightful. It is not just to employ these for political momentum, and it detracts from the vital work of educating our children. A few years ago, I stood in this very same spot, a teacher and coach of children of these and other school board members, both past and present. You chose me as a representative of this division, and now I use my voice, with which you entrusted me, to ask that, not only in this lead-up to the election, a time where we face a teacher shortage and retention issues, but from this point forward, stop distracting the community, parents, teachers, students, educational staff, from doing what they and you want them to do. Rather, commit to fostering a healthy, productive, and professional learning environment in person and online. Use your time, voice, posts on Facebook, YouTube videos, to talk to kids about what books they like to read. Help them find the books on Destiny. Attend PTA meetings. Learn how you can volunteer in your school community. Talk to your child's teacher. Read with your child. Foster a love of reading and a lifelong skill that will help your child succeed in any endeavor path and career. Then, if you have a question, ask. Ask the teacher or the librarian. We welcome the conversation and what is in the best interest of your child first and always. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Luksen, then Colleen Clementson. Speaker number nine had to cancel, so then it will be Daphne Stagg. Welcome, Ms. Luksen.
Good evening. I am speaking tonight on the proposed amendments to the speaker policy. I understand the need to get some semblance of normalcy back to the school board. Issues facing public education these days are being tried in the court of public opinion, social media, blogs, newspapers, TV news, during the public comment portion of school board meetings. Performative outrage has brought masks, CRT, and accusations that this elected body, teachers and administrators, are pushing Marxism, racism, diversity, equity, and inclusiveness, deviant sexuality, and other indoctrination upon the student body. In addition, if you haven't noticed, there's a rapidly growing cult movement of mostly white, upper-middle-class Christians embracing and perpetuating nonsensical conspiracy theories like planned pandemics, underground Antifa armies. We need to defend truth steadfastly and condemn lies. I do not believe the answer is limiting community access. Communication and transparency is the most effective- Communication and transparency is the most effective way to combat the rhetoric they are trying to spread like a disease. The hyper-partisan Christian nationalists of the Political Action Committee Students First Virginia recently held a candidate forum where elected school board member Victoria Manning called eight other members terrorists publicly. An endorsed candidate of this PAC said the first thing he would do when he gets elected is to tell these eight members to shh. That misogynistic comment is an example of the voices Vicky Manning, Carolyn Weems, and Laura Hughes are lifting up in our communities. I'm agreeable to the non-agenda public comments moving to the end of the meeting. I think that's a fair compromise, but only if they're televised. The community is entitled to hear perspectives from all viewpoints. Don't sit up on that dais, preach about accessibility, and restrict public discourse because of public criticism. A solution would be allowing board members to respond after a public comment concludes. I don't see any of these proposed changes improving the current system. Still, I can confidently say that problems will arise for every member who votes for restricting communication and transparency. These policies cannot be used to silence critics. How can we ensure children's needs are met if we cannot share concerns and needs in an open meeting? While it is also true that this is not a town hall meeting. This is a business meeting, but representation matters. Sending an email to your school board, your elected school board member who may or may not respond is not the same as standing up in a public forum addressing the body as a whole. And the change to the majority of, to a majority vote to cancel the non-agenda public comment period at any meeting? Let me tell you all something. If I take time to prepare my thoughts, I show up here and sit here for y'all to vote to tell me I have to go home.
And that is time.
Y'all are not going to like me very much. Thanks, have a good night.
Our next speaker is Colleen Clementson, and then Daphne Stagg.
Welcome, Ms. Clementson.
Good evening. I am here tonight to speak, to speak about the proposal to limit the amount of public speakers specifically on non-agenda items. For me, the purpose of allowing citizens to speak on non-agenda items is to bring to the school board issues that the members and district may not be aware of. For example, back in April during National Math Month, my homage to Olivia Newton-John, I spoke as a non-agenda speaker. I addressed the board about the need for a permanent early numeracy remediation program based on the compass twenty, compass to twenty twenty-five statistic framework, goal one, stating that the district would develop, implement, and monitor a K through twelve plan for improving math. I brought this to the attention of the board because since I've been back in Virginia Beach and attended meetings, this issue has never been on the agenda. In fact, it's never been mentioned, even though I've spoken with a large group of teachers K through two who have been begging for years for a PALS program similar, a math program, a PALS program for math. Who gets to decide which non-agenda items will be allowed to be heard? If it is a non-agenda item, will the speakers have to submit a detailed statement about why they are speaking and about what they are speaking about and why? I can appreciate wanting to keep your meetings moving and getting done at a reasonable time. However, I feel that these are not the reasons why this motion is being put forward. I have always had great respect for elected officials, especially those who serve on school boards. But I have to wonder if the decisions that the board is making, not all board members, is not based on the science of reading, which is our district's new reading curriculum, or the science of math, but instead based on popular political science. Putting a motion to limit non-agenda speakers with no guidelines attached for consideration seems to me like the board and district admin is attempting to silence parents and further disconnect between parents and this district. As a parent first and an educator second in this district, I can tell you the disconnect is real. There is little faith in this board and district and that the perception is the board and district administration is more concerned with optics and popular solving our academics and discipline.
Our next speaker is Daphne Stagg.
Welcome, Ms. Stagg.
Good evening. I was going to speak about misappropriations and money that is being put into the new schools. And, you know, we don't even have, we, we bought a curriculum that's two stars. We don't have money for curriculum. We don't have money to give teachers. After thirty years, they can't get a raise, but Spence can give his, himself a raise whenever he wants. Your spending is just mind-boggling. I read in LinkedIn that, in Spence's LinkedIn, that I've improved student achievement, increased access to rigorous coursework. Really? That's a joke. And I developed and implemented twenty-first century curriculum. So he's developing our curriculum now? Who did we buy that curriculum from? That two-star curriculum? Does anybody know who it came from? That's odd. And I just want to talk about the books since they brought them up. And it's so disturbing that teachers would come and speak and say that they want people to mirror what's in those books. Some of the wording in there is so horrendous, it's disgusting. You even made, turned off the video so the public couldn't see it. It's horrendous. And they, teachers that have that attitude are the ones that are making the other teachers leave. And you are all implementing this horrendous curriculum and the books. And when are you going to wake up? You know? Excuse me. I had the privilege of meeting one of Spence's previous school board members in North Carolina. And she told me that he was going to be fired because he was hiring all of his associates and spending millions and millions of dollars. And what are you doing with all this money? You people better wake up. This is ridiculous.
Madam Vice Chair, we are now going to move on to our online speakers. Our first speaker is Lisa Varga. Lisa Varga, please unmute.
Welcome, Ms. Varga.
Thank you, can you hear me?
We can.
It has been an exhausting two-plus years and I know you are tired. But there are members of your board who are trying to prey on that exhaustion by adding more and more pressure that is unwarranted. Please do not give in to their demands. We have watched as the freedom to read has come under attack with an unreasonable quantity of reconsideration requests for library materials filed since last fall. If these thoughts or objections were original or came with any intellectual thought or exploration of a deeper context, I would appreciate them. But everything posted on various Facebook groups is a deliberate copy-paste from other sites. When you choose to take a book off a shelf because you have been pressured by a person who has taken content from other websites that are not verified by any educational authority, you are allowing people from outside our community to influence what happens in our schools. If someone tells you they have quote "created their own rating system for books", but that person has no background in library collection development, learning styles, knowledge organization, or instructional development, you do not want that person rating books for our students, especially when the rating system was not actually developed by the person who claims to have developed it. The entire point of this is not to protect children. It is to exhaust those in a position of authority who disagree with the instigators. You know, as education, education professionals, not to give in to a child who is throwing a tantrum. When you pull back and look at the big picture, that is what is happening here. If the leaders of this group actually cared about students, the students' first VA page would be filled with positive messages about the incredible things students at VV schools have accomplished under extraordinary circumstances. Instead, it is filled with half-truths and deliberate misinformation, manipulating the very reasonable people who follow that page. Mrs. Hughes, last year you told me you disagreed with my definition of censorship and that censorship means these items would not be available. Now many of these items are unavailable to students. Sixty-seven percent of voters disagree with attempts to remove books from school library shelves. Those voters oppose censorship. If you are a voter and you are listening to or watching this, please keep this in mind. I'll reiterate what I've said when I have spoken here before. I support parental involvement in education. I am the executive director of the Virginia Library Association, which represents close to five thousand librarians and library staff throughout the Commonwealth. I have been a librarian for twenty-five years and have been a supporter of intellectual freedom my entire life. What is happening here is a violation of the intellectual freedom of our students and future generations of Virginia Beach residents. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Jerome Bell. Please unmute.
Welcome, Mr. Bell.
Thank you very much for having me. You know, just, you know, the recent things that's come to light. Mr. Spence obviously believes that he's a king. You know, making unilateral decisions to take away parents' rights to challenge pornography that's available to their kids while abolishing their First Amendment right of free speech. And Nazi Germany and other countries ruled by dictators. First, they try to take your guns, then silence the citizen's voice by tactics such as the ones that you are proposing. And not allowing online speakers to be streamed live or hard is, is, is limiting free speech. So I hope you do not do that. Fortunately, we are still a free country and a people, even though out-of-control government agencies like the FBI, as we're coming to see with the raid on President Trump's house, and school boards believe they are the Gestapo and the brown shirts to quell dissent. But let me remind you of a certain document and an excerpt from it. It's called the Declaration of Independence. And I will remind you that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form, as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Well, let me tell you, the people will abolish this school board. And it won't be by violence yet, but it will be by vote. You know, Frederick Douglass said that, you know, we have three things. You have the voting box, you have the cartridge box, and you have the, well, anyway, I forgot that. You know, as far as Frederick Douglass goes, and I apologize for that. But, but there's the voters' box, the cartridge box, and the election box. So we're going to elect you out, we're going to vote you out. The Gang of Eight that are sitting up on the stage right now.
Thirty seconds.
Their time is very, very limited. Their time is very, very limited. And I hope people come out and really, really vote these Gang of Eight out because it's time to take our schools back and time to take our school board back for our children and for the parents so we can have our rights back. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Vic Nichols. Please unmute.
Welcome, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you. I am against appendix B. C, public comments, all of them should be broadcast. When you limit them to ten speakers, you remove First Amendment rights. These are people that have a right to be heard by the public and not just a small group. Parents speak to get kids moved to other schools on traffic speeding violations, and teachers have encouraged each other and also speak on school topics. Books affect other cities, they do together. I find it disturbing that y'all would get rid of that. On number ten, the violation of health protocols. Rhode Island is trying to get out of a lawsuit against its school's mask mandate because a public health official revealed he was unfamiliar with research that questioned the trade-offs of masks even in his own field. Judge Jeffrey Lampier found that the plaintiff's children were suffering irreparable harm from the mandates and warned the Department of Health Director James McDonald to quote "tread carefully in promulgating new regulations or extending any existing regulations" and not to expect a bottomless pit of deference in the future. Also on number ten, too, what was started by Superintendent Spence was not an elected official. This is the bill and law state. There is no authority to delegate powers to anyone else, including an unelected bureaucrat. My concern with that is at the teachers' union convention, seventy new business items and forty amendments of bylaws, legislation, and resolutions. Only four were remotely addressed on student academic achievement, which was student financial literacy and resources for English learners and language acquisition. Nearly half of the motions dealt with identity politics, social justice, and promoting political ideology. Close to forty percent of the motions were related to protecting teachers' jobs and increasing their benefits and their rights of social justice. No vaccinated, non-vaccinated people could attend that meeting, but the rest had their trips paid for. It is obvious that a political ideology is the only one that's allowed. We want to make sure that everyone has their right to speak. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Saltziak. Please unmute.
Welcome, Mrs. Saltziak.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Suzanne and I'm coming to speak about the restriction of speakers at school board meetings to ten speakers for off-agenda items and the ability of the board to decide to cancel this. The public has the right to speak to their elected officials. Frequently, speaking at, with regards to off-agenda items is how topics are brought to workshop and later put on the agenda. How we all came to get to know each other is because of recess being presented several times during off-agenda topics. Important topics that have been brought up during off-agenda discussion that have led to important discussions or changes include that recess discussion, inequity and bias in the selection process for our gifted education, parents being notified when their children are participating in lockdown drills to mitigate the emotional impact, the first day of school being on a high-hole day for many of our students, COVID mitigation, supporting our ASL students, and most recent, and actually, the principals that you are doing this to protect would not have been able to speak if too many others had signed up previously to speak. Jill Blake's phenomenal speech tonight about students finding themselves in the library would not be, may not be there. Many of these are equity issues. The right to speak and address our public officials is a way that we address these inequities. While I believe the administration team and Dr. Spence believe they are doing rights, right? One of the things that is important part of being an advocate and standing for equity is being willing to hear that which you do not know or is outside of your experience. Briefly, you don't know what you don't know. Additionally, limiting speakers is another equity issue. People who work and do not have access to phones or email during their job may not have the same access to sign up within the first ten minutes on an important topic. So you automatically limit who you hear from. Students who don't have access to their phones may not be able to sign up, teachers and staff. Furthermore, I do not believe that this, any of this policy will actually protect staff's names from being said. I have nothing but empathy for those who do so as I was accused at a board meeting of orchestrating and paying students who I had never actually met at that time to come speak. This still would have been allowed while it was on topic. Wasn't correct and could have been damaging to my career, and I know that I'm not an employee, obviously. But one of the hard truths of freedom of speech is that things like this can happen. I'm actually more upset that a student's name was used and accused of things during a board meeting. Again, during a topic that was on agenda. But I do have one idea of something that might help protect staff. During the past two years, I have received more than ten contacts from staff members that after speaking at the school board were called down to their administrator's office and that that principal stated that central admin had called them and instructed them to talk to the staff that spoke at the school board and warned them to use quote "chain of command". All of these issues that were spoken on were not things that were within the realm of that administrator or principal. This, to me, is significantly more problematic and I again implore you to adopt a new communication method.
Thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Next on the agenda is information, Mrs. Lynetti. Policy review recommendations under information. Thank you, Mrs. Lynetti.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Kami Lynetti, school board attorney. And on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I will be presenting the nine bylaws and policies that were recommended for information to the school board for tonight's meeting. This came out of the July fourteenth PRC meeting. The first one up is Bylaw 147. Bylaw 147's title is Public Comments at School Board Meetings. At the request of the PRC, we, we drafted this particular bylaw and this was to separate out the public speakers where you had moved last year to put them in as one speaking time period. We were asked to split them out and see if we could do that. So what you will see in the proposed amendment to Bylaw 147 is Section C would now be, instead of limitations for public comments, it would be rules for public comments. Section A would then be agenda item, public comments. And again, that would happen in the normal order in your agenda. Section two under this would now be entitled Non-Agenda Section two under this would now be entitled Non-Agenda Public Comments, and it would read as follows. The school board will hear public comments regarding matters that are not on the school board's agenda for that meeting at the conclusion of the school board meeting. When a closed session or a return to workshop or information items is carried, is scheduled to happen at the end of the regular school board meeting at its sole discretion, the school board may agree to hear non-agenda public comments prior to the closed session or the return to workshop or information items begin. Non-agenda item public comments will not be broadcast. The school board will limit non-agenda public comments to thirty minutes or ten speakers. At sole discretion, the school board may, by majority vote, cancel the non-agenda public comment section of the agenda at any meeting. We'd end up having to renumber a little bit further. In Section Four, we would add the comments, again, the comments will, the speaker would be given a thirty-second warning. It may not exceed this time period. Should a speaker continue to speak after three minutes, the clerk will call the speak, next speaker at the end of the comment period. That's just a clarification. And I don't believe there are any other significant changes, some minor formatting changes after that. That was the recommendation, and I will point out that we have to, you'll see the next one. Appendix B, which was also amended last year, has to do with the standing rules for the procedures. There are mirroring, um, procedures that are set forth in how you did the agenda. I will get to that next. But those were, that was the recommendation coming out of the Policy Review Committee for Bylaw one forty-seven.
Okay, um, we have a few questions. So Ms. Anderson. And then Ms. Hughes.
First, um, I want to say to the audience that the intent for this change is not to silence constituents. The intent is to allow this board to attend business, tend to business, vote on agenda items before late in the night, and still allow for non-agenda speakers to give us their opinions after the formal meeting. The non-agenda speakers will still be allowed to speak and give their opinions, but since their speeches are not on the agenda, their comments should wait until after we've concluded the business of the board for that evening. If their comments are pertinent to K through twelve education, of course, we'll be able to hear them and listen to their comments. I would like to hear all constituents. So I'm asking that we take out the sentence that limits the non-agenda speakers to ten. Uh, the part in number two where it says.
The final two sentences in two, in C two.
In C two, yes. Uh, the school board will limit non-agenda public item, public comments to thirty minutes or ten speakers. I'd like to eliminate that sentence completely. Um, I don't think we should put a time on it or nor, nor should we put a number of people. I think we need to be able to hear all speakers who come before us, and, uh, I, I, I was on the committee and voted for this, but I, I, I don't recall seeing this. That must have slipped by us. I'm not sure, but I, I would, I would have said something, so. Um, I, I'm asking that we take that out for now. Um.
Should this be sent back to the Policy Committee?
It's possible. We could send it back. I'm not sure. Ms., Ms. Riggs, she's the chair.
Um, yeah, we can send it back. I, I agree with that because I, I, uh, Ms. Anderson had sent that to us, the Policy Review, after we saw this, um, come out and we're like, we don't recall that sentence. So I'm, I'm in agreement with Mrs., um, uh, Anderson. I'd like to see that taken out, too, because I don't want to limit any of our speakers.
You do have a PRC meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, we do. We have it on Thursday. We'll bring it back on Thursday and discuss it again if that's the, uh, will of the board.
Right. So whatever the will of the board is, I'll go with the will of the board. Okay. All right, Ms. Hughes.
Um, yes, this, there's no reason to change the policy. I'm looking at, you know, as far as policy review goes, we've talked about how we have some policies we haven't looked at since nineteen ninety-three. This policy has been looked at thirteen times since nineteen ninety-two. If we add the, a date on it this month, it'll be fourteen times. And yeah, this absolutely was intended to limit what goes out to the public. I mean, we've heard people from both sides of the aisle. We've heard people who rarely say anything I agree with, and, and we're in alignment on this. Nobody wants to be silenced. These are public schools and their public meetings, and if people are in here talking about decisions made in these public schools at public meetings, the public has a right to be heard. And there are things I hear that I don't like. There are things you hear that you don't like, but guess what? That's what you signed on for when you ran for office. We're gonna hear things we don't like. We are beholden to the public. The staff is beholden to us. We're beholden to them in every decision that's made. They have a right to discuss it. These are their children. These are their tax dollars, and this is, this is just not okay.
All right, Ms. Manning.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Ms. Hughes, and I also agree that it is our job to attend a public to business, and um, our business is to serve the public who elect us to represent them. And so to try to limit, um, them coming to speak to us, and, and I agree with Ms. Hughes. I don't understand why this keeps coming back to us. It's been, I mean, we changed it three times in just twenty twenty-one, and it's always been to see how we can control the public coming in here, who we serve and we work for. Um, so I do not favor limiting the public at all. I also don't favor the part in here that it says that it should not be streamed or recorded. Um, there are people that come in here, tell lies about me. There was one lady that said something that made some lie about me this evening, but I support her right to come in here and say what she wants to say. Um, because she is a, a citizen who has that right to come in here and say that. Um, so I, I also would like to ask the Policy Committee to take that part out. I, I would actually just like to send this back to Policy Committee and, and just table it and, and not change it at all. Why, why even change it at all? Let's just leave it like it is in one of the many changes that we made in twenty twenty-one.
So Ms. Weems and Ms. Riggs, you're up.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm totally confused why we're even talking about this. We spent so much time on this final change, and we were all in agreement and I don't, I don't even understand how it got out of Policy Review Committee. If you're saying you weren't aware, I mean, that's a huge change to limit speakers. I, I, I can't believe that two of you voted to bring this forward, but whatever. Um, I do not support limiting the number of speakers. If we're gonna be here and if we have three speakers, those three speakers are very, very important, and what they have to say is very important for us to hear. If we have three hundred speakers, that three-hundredth speaker is as important, and we need to stay here. I don't care what time it is. I don't care how late it is. If they take the time to come down here and share their insights, their suggestions, their complaints, their concerns, we owe it to them. We work for them. So I am not in favor, so that needs to be taken out. The ability for us just to cancel speakers at that night, no way. I, I, so people come down here, they sign up, they take the time, they get off work, they get daycare, they battle traffic to come down here, and then we, six of us decide to cancel agenda speakers that night. No, I, I will not support that, and I will not support for it not to be recorded. Again, I don't like when people attack me. I hate it, hate it, hate it when they attack sometimes our principals and our teachers, but again, they can come down here and speak, and, um, I think it needs to be exactly how it is. I hope that we don't make any changes. We worked so hard. We came back, came back, came back, one time after another to get this right, and I think that the way that we're doing it now is very good for the public, and those are the people who we work for. So I am not in favor of any changes whatsoever.
Okay, Ms. Riggs.
Okay, so I've heard from two, two of my colleagues that said, uh, they don't understand that, why it keeps coming back. We voted, the two of us voted to bring it back so we could discuss this tonight. That's why it was brought back, because not all three, all three of us agreed. So two of us wanted it brought back to discuss it tonight, to hear what you have to say. And one of the other things is, I, again, will reiterate, that last sentence about limiting to ten, how it got through, I don't know, because I don't remember seeing that. I don't know if you do, Mrs. Hughes. I know Mrs. Anderson didn't. That wasn't in there. I, so we would have said something about it then. We really would have, because that's, that's not what we want. We do not want to limit our speakers at all. We want to hear from everybody, whether it be three or three hundred, Mrs. Weems. I agree with that. I agree with that. So, um, we are, we wanted to hear what everyone had to say. I think it should be brought back to us on Thursday because it is that soon. We can discuss it again and move forward and decide what we want to do with it from there. Um, as far as moving the non-agenda items to the end, I agree with that. That first part, that, and that was part that I agreed with, that I voted on to bring it back, and also to hear what everyone else felt. So I, I just want to reiterate what this is not, to keep people from speaking, the public from giving their, their feelings and to share. And the other thing is, it has nothing to do with what you're saying to us. We're elected officials. If we don't have that thick skin to listen to you, then we don't need to be up here. But I will say, we do have the responsibility to protect our employees from being ridiculed and disgust the way they've been. And you keep talking about us losing teachers and losing employees. Well, someone ha- some of it has to do with that kind of disrespect that they're getting from people across this city when they come and speak and when they write to them. So that has a lot to do with it as well. Ask a teacher, they'll tell you. Ask an administrator, they'll tell you as well. So this has a lot to do with protecting our employees, which we have the responsibility as school board members to do. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Owens, and then Ms. Hughes.
Thank you. Since we are bringing it forward for discussion, um, I want to make sure that I'm clear on where I land on this one. Originally, when we voted last year to combine agenda and non-agenda speakers, I was in support of that, and I know there were some others on the board who I am usually, uh, more aligned with, and we felt differently about it. I still feel like I felt last year that there is a reason that speakers need to be combined so that people can come and say what they need to say, and they're very short allotted time that we have given, their three minutes, so that we don't have the chair or whoever is going to take the, the duty of trying to stop people mid-comment and say, nope, that doesn't fit. That has to wait till after. You can say those words, but wait for these words, because that hasn't worked out well. Historically, we've seen, it just hasn't worked out well for our board, for our community, for whatever reasons. Hasn't worked. Causes more chaos. Additionally, if COVID has kind of brought any insight to me, it is that we can get information out to people different ways than when we did before COVID. That information doesn't need to be limited just to those who are able to drive out to our board meetings and sit in a room full of crowded people without health concerns and, uh, have childcare and have transportation. You don't have to have all of those different levels of privilege to come and hear what is being discussed in a community forum. You should be able to be at home where technology allows the access to go and hear what's going on, because maybe you're having the same concern and you didn't know it was a concern in other places. I don't want to take that away that we have given. And so I'd love to see it go back and not come back out, but if it, if it has to come back out, that's okay. That's where I will land on my vote.
Ms. Hughes, and then Ms. Franklin.
So I agree with everything Ms. Owens just said, and I just, when I spoke before, there was one thing I did neglect to say. Having all these speakers at the front end does not impede our ability to do business in a timely manner, because part of what we voted on last year is that speakers get cut off at eight P M. We conduct all of our votes, and then we pick them back up. So it really doesn't cause us to have to do business later, and we specifically did that so that staff members can go if they need to after presentations and that we're not making votes at two in the morning. So that's actually not an issue.
Mrs. Franklin. Okay. Well, actually, um, Ms. Hughes actually just said what I was gonna say, too, is that we, um, yeah, I, I personally, I, I appreciate all of the comments from the colleagues, and I agree with that, that, you know, since we did make that change for the eight o'clock, you know, where we stop, um, I personally, uh, agree with, with, um, Ms. Owens on this, that I would prefer not to see it come back, because we did go through such an extensive process of getting to the point where we decided on that last year. I absolutely understand that we want to protect our employees and, um, and I, I, I would hope that we are learning, um, how to be more respectful to them and, but I, I think that we have worked so hard to get to this point. We have, um, agreed to do, you know, stop at eight o'clock with a speaker so we can finish our business. So I personally would say that right now, I, it's, um, something we've already discussed, and probably we can just move forward. So that's my opinion. Thanks.
May I suggest that we also take Appendix B back, because the only changes in Appendix B which reflect was in Bylaw one forty-seven. I won't cover that. There are no further questions or comments on Bylaw one forty-seven, Appendix B. I'll move on to Policy three twenty-two. Three twenty-two falls under your business and non-instruction operations. This has to do with tuition fees. As a number, when we amended this, which really wasn't that long ago, uh, um, we had put in to make a change to allow non, to allow non-resident employees' children to roll in the school division. We were contacted by, uh, several individuals who work for CSEP, who in our CSEP programs, which, you know, are embedded in our schools, and said, asked that they could be considered. So we have re, you'll see some of the policies, we have gone ahead and tried to clarify that if you were a CSEP individual, which means you don't technically work for the school division, you work for CSEP, which is a regional program that you're embedded within our school division, that you would be able to come and put your children in school for the same basis that employees were, and that was just something we had not thought of before. So under Bylaw, uh, sorry, Policy three twenty-two under Section B, which is non-resident employee students, we would amend it to read, "non-resident full-time BBCPS employees, comma, to include CSEP employees, comma, working in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, will be allowed to enroll their children tuition-free. In moment will be contingent on meeting requirements outlined in Regulation five ten point one and Policy five fourteen." So that would be the recommendation for Policy three twenty-two. Are there any comments about that? Hearing no comments about that, I will move on to Policy.
Mrs. Lynetti, excuse us.
Yes, Mrs. Weems. I just wanted to comment that, thank you. I think that's just such an excellent idea, and we got the email or a couple of emails from teachers, and, um, I mean, that's just an extra perk that they deserve, and when things are so hard right now, I, I think it's just a great, um, a great sign of respect of how hard they work. So thank you so much.
Only a hundred years too late.
Yeah, way too late, and I apologize for that. It should have been all along, but it was something, like you said, I guess, nobody brought it up to our attention, unfortunately, but ve- very glad to see.
I think they're so well embedded in your school division that it assumes that they were employees. It's just oversight.
I'm so glad to see that.
If we take a look at Policy three sixty-five, which is security, buildings, grounds, cellular phones, and portable telecommunications devices, this goes with the presentation you had at your workshop tonight about your new policies on cell phones. All we're going to do in this particular section is remove the editor's notes, because the editor's notes read, "For additional information, bring, see Bring Your Own Device, BYOD, Student Parent Guidelines for Use of Privately-Owned Electronic Devices." As mentioned, we are going to be withdrawing the guidelines and implementing the new regulations, so we just wanted to pull that out because that will no longer be in there. So that would be the only recommendation for, to amend on Policy three sixty-five. Are any questions on? Hearing no questions, I will move on to Policy five fourteen. This is school attendance zones. This works with the, the two policies ago that I was talking about. We needed to clarify also in this particular regulation, five fourteen has to, well, it says school attendance zones. It also talks about how attendance zone criteria, and if you look on Section F, Attendance Zone Criteria and subsection three, we, this is also where we put in about our, our employees can put their children in school. We had to correct this one. So amending to this section, again, F three would read, "Children of school-based employees, including CSEP employees working in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, will be allowed to attend the school in which such parent or guardian reports or is their primary assignment," the rest of the sentences will basically stay the same, "that we add, non-resident full-time employees to include CSEP employees working in Virginia Beach City Public Schools will be allowed to enroll their children. In moment will be contingent on meeting the requirements outlined in Regulation five ten point one and Policy three twenty-two." So that's just to match the last policy.
Ms. Owens.
Just, um, for my own clarification, I understand that the employee can bring, uh, their child, you said, to the school that they are working or within the district that they're working.
Well, that's, if you, we amended this, I'm trying to think, it wasn't too long ago. When we look at that, what happens is you just can't take your child and say, they can go to any school division, school in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. There are procedures for this. There are procedures for this, so generally, if an elementary school, they should be attending the school at which you are working, so that you're bringing the child to school and the child's there. And then the feeder pattern will probably fall from there, because we understand that you might be an elementary school teacher or an elementary school employee, but your child moves on to high school, and they would follow a feeder pattern. Also, if they were an academy program, we would follow the academy program. So that's what, um, 510 does, it looks at where you can put the school. So you can't just come here and say, well, I want my child to go to this school, but I'm going to be working down at another school somewhere else in the city. So you have to follow your regulations on where your child can go to school.
And so if a employee came over and say they're coming in with a rising ninth grader, uh, the expectation would be that the ninth grader would enroll in whatever the feeder school is for the elementary or middle school that that person is embedded in, but they can still apply for the.
Correct. They can apply for an academy program, if they get into an academy program, but otherwise they should be following the feeder pattern, because otherwise they don't have a residence basis for them.
Gotcha.
So we choose the resident to be where the parent is assigned to go to work.
Okay. And so that's what's clarified in the, um, uh, policy?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we, sorry. Do we, do we clarify that they would go to the homeschool of that employee, like, you know, some employees are in a couple of schools, but they have a, what's called their homeschool where their check, it used to be where our check was, now checks don't go there anymore.
We had a law, a fairly long discussion with Mrs. Woodhouse about this, how we clarify, and they have a way to do it, but that would be wherever your primary assignment would be. I understand that they're occasionally itinerant folks, and we also would talk about bus drivers, and there are, they have procedures for that to decide where your, your homeschool or primary, um, assignment is.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, that is correct. Every itinerant is assigned to homeschool, no matter how many schools they are assigned to work. That's where they pick up their paycheck, where their time and attendance is taken, and so that would be considered their homeschool of record for enrollment for their students.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was trying to get at. Thank you very much.
If there are no further questions on that policy, I will move on to Policy 646. 646 falls under your instruction section. This has to do with extracurricular activities. There are really only some scrivener changes, you'll see in the first paragraph, just added some scrivener changes there. And again, the second paragraph, the bulk of the changes, I'm sorry, second page of that was Sections E and Sections G, H, and I also have just minor either capitalization or scrivener changes to it. The major amount of changes in this section actually come in the legal references, which needed to be updated. As you'll see, this is one of those policies that we last looked at in 1993, so we needed to update to make sure the law was current. Those are the only recommendations of the scrivener changes to the extracurricular activities. Are there any further questions? Hearing no further questions on that, I'll move on to 648, Middle School Activities Programs. Again, another policy that hasn't been looked at a number of years. The only recommended change would be in Section F. We would take out, after, develop a handbook that describes activities and skills. We took out the word after and skills, as well as, as the structure and organization programs appropriate for middle school students. That is the only change we're recommending, recommending for this particular policy. Are there any questions about Policy 648? Hearing no questions on 648, I will move on to 651, but also an instruction, this is scheduling for instruction, a minor scrivener change in the first sentence, and then we had to correct the references, again, a policy that had not been looked at since in 1993. So we needed to update to the appropriate regulation that is cited to, and that's the changes you see in the reference. Any question about 651? Hearing no questions about 651, we'll look at six, Policy 653, also an instruction, this is grouping for instruction, and the only change we have in the, will be the last paragraph, the superintendent has developed Regulations 653 to ensure consistency of all schools and grouping students, just instead of shall, he has already done that. Again, a slightly older policy from 2017, but that is the only recommendation we have at this point. That is the end of the recommendations of the Policy Review Committee from the July 14th, 2020 meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynetti. That brings us to the con- the consent agenda portion of the meeting. Uh, I'll go ahead and announce that we have, uh, one consent item tonight, the Creed's Elementary School Library Lease Agreement. So a motion to approve, Mrs. Franklin, and a second, Mrs. Holtz. All in favor, show a raised hand, please. Ms. Weems, how do you vote? Okay. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay. Agenda item 15, Action. We have a, three action items tonight. So we begin with the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Um, mo- motion to approve, um, Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Melnick. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, uh, please show your approval with a raised hand. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. The motion did pass. Now, Dr. Robertson, would you please announce our administrative appointments?
Yes, please. If I could ask, uh, Amber Keys to please stand. Amber is currently an administrative assistant at Bayside and Luxford Elementary Schools, and I'm pleased that you recommended, uh, her approval to be assistant principal at Providence Elementary School. Her previously, she's been a math specialist in Portsmouth Public Schools. Previous to that, she was a, also a teacher at Bayside Sixth Grade Campus. So welcome, Amber. I understand you have some guests. Okay. Congratulations. If I could ask Ty Harris to stand up. Ty Harris has, uh, been a coordinator of, in PGI, over professional learning, and prior to that, he was a principal in Williamsburg, James City County, and in Falls Church, City Public Schools. Prior to that, he was an assistant principal in Williamsburg, James City County, and again, Falls Church. He was, worked at the Department of Education as an education resource management specialist, and also was a teacher in Fairfax and Greenville County. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for him to be the new director of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I see you, I see you brought a guest.
She waited a long time, Ms. Kalin.
Madam Chair, that's all the, uh.
We do have another one, uh, Dr. Robertson.
Oh, Dr. Manigo, I don't have Dr. Manigo, shoot, but I, I have not known enough. So, uh, Dr. Manigo, can I ask you to please stand? So Dr. Manigo is no stranger to us. Uh, she has worked in Virginia Beach for quite some time, most recently as assistant principal at Providence Elementary School. Prior to that, she was a principal at, at Newtown, and prior to that, she was an assistant principal. And we're pleased that you, uh, approved our recommendation for her to be the next principal at College Park Elementary School. And I see you have some guests.
Tonight with me, I have my best person, and my elder, and my brother, and my father, Grandpa, and my extraordinary friend, and my sister Michael, who is going to greet the boys.
Congratulations. And now that I have the updated sheet, there's one more. If I can ask Misty Cash to, uh, please stand. So Misty, uh, has been working in the Department of Budget and Finance for quite some time, most recently the financial management specialist, and prior to that, as a principal accountant and a senior accountant, a budget analyst, an accountant and a financial analyst. And we're pleased that you approved our recommendation for her to be the new coordinator of accounting in the Department of Budget and Finance. And we see you have some guests. All right. Very good. Thank you. So congratulations, everyone. And that's all the recommendations, ma'am.
Always a, a, a nice moment of the meeting, and, and we always, uh, say on behalf of all of us, congratulations again, we wish you much success, and we're here to support So now that brings us to, uh, the second action item, Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act. So to, uh, bring this up for discussion, motion to approve, Mrs. Holtz, and a second, uh, Mrs. Felton. All right. So now we have Mr. Freeman.
Uh, good evening. So Melissa Ingram will be given the brief tonight, but I wanted to set up a little bit before we go into that action agenda item. So she's going to provide some details so that we can then, uh, assist you with the discussion that follows. Um, so this is the next step in the process that we've been going through for the PPEA. Um, it is, uh, relatively low risk, uh, to enter into this one. We are making our recommendation based on a high degree of confidence that there is promise, that is, there's not a guarantee, we need to develop more information to understand what our recommendation will be related to a comprehensive agreement. That comprehensive agreement will come roughly a year from now, um, and after our evaluation of that comprehensive agreement, we'll be able to make a better comparison whether this is going to be beneficial to, uh, to all, including the school division and including our taxpayers for moving forward. But what we see right now, there is promise related to taxpayers and projected offset in cost, uh, for these buildings. And that is primarily related to, uh, accounting for inflation to be able to, um, do the, to construct the facilities earlier in timeline so that we capture savings related to, uh, inflation. And that inflation is significant. We are using the same inflation numbers that we reported to a year ago, which have nothing to do with the COVID supply chain issues and the inflation related to that, which is more significant than the, uh, values that we've previously done. We've done that for consistency purposes, so that we're giving you information that's consistent and it's not changing over time. So with that, um, I'll let, uh, Ms. Ingram go through the, uh, the details with you, and then we'll answer any questions that you have, uh, after that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Freeman. Um, so, good evening, Madam Chair, uh, Madam Vice Chair, uh, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. Um, I'm here today to provide you with an additional brief on the proposed PPEA interim agreement, um, for three replacement schools approved in the CIP. Uh, we have discussed the PPA process several times with our school board and with our city council. Today, we are seeking action for this roughly year-long interim agreement. As you can see in front of you, currently, we have three school replacement projects proposed in the capital improvement program, recently approved by the school board and city council. There is follows, uh, Princess Anne High School Replacement, CIP 1-015, with a budget of 162.65 million. Williams Elementary School, Bayside Sixth Grade Replacement, CIP 1-028, with a budget of 68.3875 million. And Bayside High School Replacement, CIP 1-029, with a budget of 197.7 million. Uh, these three CIP projects total over $428 million. And again, the proposed interim agreement you'll be taking action on today is, um, roughly $15.4 million. This equates to 55% of the divi- design budget and 3.6% of the total budget of these three schools. Um, it's also important to note that also included in the interim agreement, um, which is posted online for the public, is a credit from the offer for up to $500,000 for any cost reimbursements needed for VBCPS, uh, should the division decide to hire consultants or services to aid with working towards the comprehensive agreement. So again, after a year's process, um, we're here today to seek action for the interim agreement at $15.4 million. Uh, V- VBCPS's PPA RFP process has undergone many required steps and information sharing over the last year. This interim agreement is, um, up for action today and later in September with city council. As a recap from former meetings, the deliverables for the interim agreement would be educational specifications, conceptual plans with building and site options, schematic designs, 30% design and engineering documents, and a GMP or guaranteed maximum price. These would all be developed with public input, um, from stakeholders of the community and the school division. Again, if the interim agreement is successful, the school board can enter into a comprehensive agreement with the offer, looking at roughly six years of construction for the three replacement schools. However, the comprehensive agreement is not what is being acted on today. Only the interim agreement for $15.4 million is up for action with the deliverables just stated. And so again, we've, we've talked about this in the past, some of the benefits of the PPA process. Again, schools opening earlier, um, not only would they benefit, um, roughly four, um, 4,500 students in their learning environments, but also means an earlier bid date for construction services, which will result in cost savings tied to earlier bid and completion of schools, avoiding several years of inflation for each project. Also, um, in benefit of cost savings is the contractor and architectural engineering design team is able to help produce these cost savings, working together, um, and having input from the beginning of the process until the end of a process, creating efficiencies. Also, our, for, think, considering our guaranteed maximum price, with the cost per square foot of construction inflating historically between 4.8 to 5.6% annually, coupled with the current volatility of the market in respect to inflation, estimated around 9% for this current year, getting to an earlier guaranteed maximum bright, maximum price for three replacement projects could result in a significant cost avoidance for these three projects. Uh, another benefit to the PPA process would be the establishment of a prototype high school for the next several high school replacements, with several learning communities and ac- academic areas to be adapted to the next replacement school specialties. By retaining ownership of documents, the prototype plan will speed up design processes for future schools to utilize as the starting point of design. And then it's also important to discuss financial commitments. Again, in front of you today is just the interim agreement for the $15.4 million. Um, the, the funding, uh, for this project does commit to funding beyond the six-year CIP for the comprehensive agreement. In addition to, uh, public input process over the next year for the interim agreement, city staff and school staff will work through the next budget process, looking at the PPA process and looking at funding for that process. So again, um, for consideration, with all funds being appropriated right now, is the interim agreement for $15.4 million. Okay? And as a recap to, um, where we've been, again, we had, um, starting in June, so a little bit over a year ago, unsolicited proposal received and accepted, um, by the school division. We then had two offers, um, during the competitive bid process, SB Ballard Construction Company and Heartland Jordan JV put in conceptual and detailed proposals. We came to the board with a school board workshops, and then finalized the interim agreement with the preferred proposer and, and posted all documents publicly online for the public to review, including the interim agreement up for action today. Um, we had a school board public hearing and information meeting in late June, and then met with city council for information on the entire PPA process, including the interim and comprehensive agreement. So our critical milestones right now, we're here today, again, for inter-, um, for action on the interim agreement, again, roughly a one-year process. We're, then we'll have a city council brief on the interim agreement in August 16th, and then look to them for action on September 6th. Now, so then, i- if approved, if the interim agreement is approved both by school board today and city council in September, um, the consultant will hit the ground running, they've already been doing so at their own risk. Um, and the not-to-exceed price of $15.4 million will allow design to mature through the input process, um, will allow staff to review work and ensure that it is satisfactory for the school division, and then we will be able to negotiate and understand what the construction costs during a comprehensive agreement might be after all that public input is, is, um, put into place for the comprehensive agreement. And then again, grade out here on timelines, just for your information, but, um, you know, we will come back to you in late spring, 2023, um, with a proposed comprehensive agreement and the GMP, try, again, working towards attaining approvals from both school board and city council, ensuring all, um, all is met in terms of their needs. And then, um, if that is approved from spring 2023 to June 2029, uh, we would have construction for roughly six years for the three replacement schools. So, um, again, here today for the $15.4 million interim agreement, with all funds appropriated, and the ability of VBCPS to utilize all input and documents, um, created during the year-long, uh, public input and design process. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Uh, Ms. Ingram, be happy, before we proceed with that, we're going to read the resolution.
Sure.
Okay. And before I do that, I just wanted to let the board know that school board leadership, including Ms. Ingram, Mr. Freeman, Ms. Pate, um, Dr. Spence, yes, Mr. Hopkins, um, we met with city council leadership, um, including, um, Patrick Dolhaney and a few other members of. of their
Budget team.
Budget office. There was some confusion on city council's part. They thought that this piece was the full, the full package moving forward, and we clarified that, exactly what Ms. Ingram presented to you, and what exactly the deliverables were for that $15 million. And so there was a sigh of relief that that was not the full package at that point, and, yes. So it's, now the ball's in their court after your presentation on the 16th.
Yes, I agree. And there's a lot of work to be done during this year-long process for the interim agreement, if it is to be approved, and we look forward to working with the city on that as well.
And we will own the design plans that come from that, too.
Yes, ma'am. We would all, all input and design documents.
Even if, even if it fails, we will still own those plans.
Yes, ma'am. Even if we have to point to the documents and say to the next offer, this is not what we want.
Correct.
We will, we will still own those documents.
Okay. So before I read that, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that piece. Did you?
After you.
Okay. So after, okay, all right. "A resolution to approve the school board's entry into an interim agreement for design work for Princess Anne High School, Betty F. Williams, Bayside Sixth, and Bayside High School. Whereas the school board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, herein, herein after, school board, received an unsolicited proposal for the design and construction of Princess Anne High School, Betty F. Williams, Bayside Sixth, and Bayside High School, the projects. Whereas, following the required procedures under the Virginia Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act, PPEA, and School Board Policy 3-71, the school board accepted the unsolicited proposal and solicited competing conceptual proposals. Whereas, after review of two conceptual proposals, the school board requested detailed proposals from the two firms that submitted conceptual proposals. Whereas, after review of the detailed proposals, the school board negotiated an interim agreement with the preferred proposer, SB Ballard Construction Company. Whereas, the school board posted the interim agreement for the required 30 days and held a public hearing June 28, 2022. Whereas, the proposed interim agreement will advance design of the projects over the next 12 months, which should also allow the development of a proposed comprehensive agreement for the projects with a not-to-exceed cost of $15,404,544. Whereas, the PPEA requires the school board obtain approval from the local governing body prior to entry into an interim or comprehensive agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, that one, the school board determines that entering into the interim agreement with SB Ballard Construction Company is in the best interest of the school board and school division. Two, that this resolution and the supporting documents should be sent to the city council for approval for the school board to enter into the proposed interim agreement for the projects in the amount not to exceed $15,404,544. And three, that upon approval by the city council, the chair or designee is authorized to enter into and/or execute any and all documents, or take any necessary actions to execute the proposed interim agreement adopted by the school board this ninth day of August 2022."
Thank you, Mrs. Melnick. So the motion's on the floor, so now we'll entertain question, more questions or comments?
Yes.
I didn't really even make a motion, so.
Well, we did the motion to open it up originally. We just didn't do the resolution at the time, but thank you.
Oh, okay.
So, Ms., do we have Mrs.?
Mrs. Manning.
Ms. Manning.
Go ahead, Ms. Manning.
All right, Ms. Ingram. I understand it's to our advantage to go ahead for savings and timeframe and everything. My problem with this is, you know, at the retreat, we talked about getting input from the tri-campus community. So, say we get that input, I'm not sure when that's going to happen, I'm assuming this fall. Okay. And say out of that input, the community says, wait a minute, we're the only school that has sixth graders in with fifth graders, the way they all have it. And we don't like that. In fact, I just, I just read into the main target yesterday that had their granddaughter who's going in sixth grade Bayside School, and she's like, I don't, I want to be in a, she said, I want to be in a regular middle school. And so, so what if the input comes back that that community just says, we want to go back to K through five, we want sixth, seventh, eighth, and, you know, and then we discuss that, but yet we're approving this to move forward for plans that are putting a sixth grade class with a, with a school that has fourth and fifth. I mean, that seems like we're doing this too early that we need to wait. So help, help clarify all that for me.
So, as briefed, this doesn't go to city council until September
Right.
for approval. We're going to get feedback in September from the community. We're, as we discussed at the retreat, we want to make sure that we're getting as best input as we can. So what that means is, don't do it in the summertime. Wait till you have kids that are in school and you have families and parents engaged.
Correct.
So we're going to solicit that information from them in the September timeframe. So what you're suggesting is, we could go, I'm not, well, I don't want to say what you're suggesting. We are not going to go months with a gap of information of going down a design path with inconsistent information from the community. Those are going to happen roughly simultaneously, so it's not going to be a challenge to be able to incorporate the community's input into the design process.
Okay, because, because this is, I mean, this was, what, September 16th to city council? I don't see how you're going to get input that quickly. I mean, you don't want to do it the first week of school, or maybe the first two weeks of school, because it's crazy.
Our goal is to come back in the last meeting of September to give you that information. I will tell you, that's a very aggressive goal.
Right.
But our goal is the last meeting of September to be able to provide you the feedback of what the community shared. If we can't make that deadline, then we'll move it into October. But the goal is, and everybody understands, we are trying to come back to the school board in the last school board meeting in September.
Okay, so.
With the information on the tri-campus that the community gave us.
Okay, I mean, so my thought was to defer this vote till we get that. So tell me that that's, that would not, just convince me that if we vote on this tonight, that it's not, and we get that input that completely floors us and turns it all the way around, that we're still okay? That we haven't spent money on a design that is just like no longer needed because we're so early in the process?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
You're getting head nods all the way around.
Yes.
Yes.
So our, our design surex would be, you know, occurring late September, October. If we have to have Williams Elementary, Bayside Sixth, or later than that, then that's what needs to happen. We really look forward to the public input with them. In the community, we've already started reaching out to principals and, and staff and getting word out to the community as well, with community communications.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Mrs. Manning.
So, I completely support the modernization of our schools, especially these schools that are up here. And I see some positives in this. I like the prototype. I like that we could use that. One of my concerns is, is Ms. Weems' concerns, the input from the Bayside community. And I know you're shaking your head that we can all do that, but I still think it's put in the cart before the horse. I would like to get that input before we vote on this. My other concern is that, right now, we are in record-high inflation. We're in a recession. You know, we've got, I, I know, I have a client that has bought a house. They thought, you know, the kitchen renovations were going to cost X amount. It's going to cost triple, and they can't do it. We were going to do some improvements on our house, and we've looked at the budget, we've looked at the costs, and we're like, we can't do this. So as an elected representative of the people who are out there saying, we can't do improvements on our own properties, and we're going to start the process, and I understand that it's $15 million right now and that we get the designs or whatever, but that could end up being a $15 million pile of paper. We may not want it. You know, so, and, or we could perhaps use it if we, in the future, if we decided to, but I am extremely concerned about where we are financially, in our nation, in our state, in our locality, and what's going to happen in the, in the coming years. Record-high inflation that we've never seen before. So while I want to support the modernization of our schools, I just, for me, I don't think that it's fiscally responsible to do so right now.
Yeah. So on your first point, Ms. Manning, so Williams Elementary, Bayside Sixth Grade Campus was approved in the CIP first in 1920. We've gone through, you know, all public hearings, needed protocols through a school board. It's been approved every year since then. So the public has had information on it, just, just so that you were.
No, but I, but I mean the, the makeup of it.
Sure, and that's what was.
They haven't had that input yet.
Yep, that's what was approved, fourth, fifth grade and sixth grade campus. What we wanted to do before the design work started happening is to not just say, well, it got approved in 1920 for fourth, fifth, sixth, so we're just going to go that way. We wanted to take the extra step right now, considering design is so close if we enter into this agreement, to reach out to the community again and say, you know, are you happy with the K to one at Diamond Springs, two to three at Williams, and four to five at, at Williams? Or is this something that you would like to rezone the tri-campus so that you have K to five at each school? We just thought it was really an important step to happen before we entered into any design surex. And again, I think, you know, as long as the process takes for the community to provide that input, we can postpone those significant, those particular design surex to later on in the process and still spend time on the other two schools. To your second point, and I completely appreciate your point on how everything is getting very expensive. Part of the goal of the CIP and the goal of our office really is to make sure that students have appropriate learning environments to learn in. We have roofs failing, we have HVAC failing, so there's constant need for money. If we do renovations piecemeal, it is often more costly than doing a whole replacement project for school building. So while I do understand prices going high, one of the reasons we're trying to do this earlier rather than later, as inflation increases more as years continue, we want to be able to try to replace our buildings as the need comes in to the cheapest cost possible for the community. So that's one of the reasons we, that's one of the benefits we see to this interim agreement. And again, we're not entering into any construction costs right now. What we will find out during the interim agreement process is, number one, what does the community want in these buildings if they are to be replaced? What do they need? And then number two, how much is that going to cost for the contractor to build it? And if the cost becomes so high, you know, we can certainly have conversations with the contractor to maybe revisit it another time. Or, you know, our goal and our hope is that we're going to be avoiding years of that 5.6% inflationary uptick that we've seen throughout the Commonwealth in the nation, so.
Well, I think right now it's more at 9%.
I, I agree.
That's why, that's why I'm not comfortable with entering into anything with such a high dollar amount on it right now, because if it stays at 9%, we're really in big trouble.
So, so that's actually an advantage of the PPEA process, and I'll, I'll circle back to why that's an advantage. But the comment about, so this, this is the concern that we continue to address, is the concern related to, and I think Ms. Melnick kind of touched on this upfront, that it's $15 million wasted, and I think the way it was termed is $15 million stack of papers. It doesn't do us any good. Every bit of this $15 million will be, we can apply that at a later time outside the PPA process, part of the design bid bill, because it's not going to 100% design. It's getting the design moved along. And this is something that organizations do on a regular basis. They get designs to a certain point, they put them on the shelf, they wait until the time is right, then they pull those designs, more fully develop them, and then implement that plan. So it's not going to be $15 million wasted. That's why I shared, this is low risk. In order to be able to understand, so what we shared with you a year ago, and I shared with you upfront, is we're still using the same inflation numbers that we did pre-COVID. And you mentioned that it might be 9%. I don't know what the inflation rate is right now, because we haven't adjusted for the COVID inflation. So by entering, by going to the next step and having an interim agreement a year from now, you'll be in a position to be able to do a comparison of how much money this can potentially save taxpayers. If we package these all together by the spring, and by the time you come to an action for a comprehensive agreement, you'll be able to say, all right, based on the fully-developed comprehensive plan, we will be able to save approximately X million dollars over if we went and did this in a design bid build process and the process took that amount of time. But you, we cannot analyze that without going past the interim agreement and having that information more fully developed. So there, it is, so we don't want to share a number with you, because we cannot tell you a certainty. That number of potential cost avoidance will only come when we know it's in the comprehensive, comprehensive agreement. But it's safe to say that it could potentially be in the tens of millions of dollars that we could avoid costs by packaging it in the PPA. That's why we're here. If there wasn't a potential of cost savings in and of itself, we wouldn't be recommending that we go to the next step. If we didn't think that there would be a cost savings, the recommendation would be, hey, we don't recommend that you approve this. We recommend that we continue with the design bid build process. But that's not the case. The case is, is it still looks promising. So it looks promising that we could save our taxpayers tens of millions of dollars. And what is the cost? The cost is that we would have a, a design process initiated for all three buildings, and we would be able to use that. So we're not losing any money in the process of trying to determine how much we could save taxpayers by going into this. So I, we are aligned with making sure that we're making good use of taxpayers' money, that there's a concern related to inflation, that we don't want to enter into anything that is going to unduly provide expenses on our community and do things that are not aligned with the interests of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. In order to know that, we need to develop a comprehensive agreement. It still looks promising. So I, I hope that, I know you have several questions, and I'm not necessarily, I'm hoping to provide information that is related to what is the risk and what's the potential savings, potential cost avoidance, I should say. But we can't tell you what the potential cost avoidance is, but we can tell you that it's low risk related to, we're going to have designs that we can use moving forward.
You know, I guess I'm just concerned about where we are right now in, financially, not necessarily our school division. I trust Ms. Pate. But moving forward, we have a teacher shortage, we have bus driver shortage, and I know this is the CIP, it's a different pot of money, but it's still a big decision. And that decision, if, if a year from now, you know, our economy is tanking even worse than it is now, then that's on the 11 of us, and we're the ones that are going to be held accountable. And so I, I just, I, I struggle with making a decision this big right now.
So that's the, to your timeframe of, if the economy's tanking a year from now, if we come back to you with a comprehensive agreement, it doesn't make sense, because the numbers don't reflect what we value, we're going to share that with, we're going to share you, with you, here's what the numbers say. And then you'll be in the best position to be able to make that decision. But you can't get there unless you approve the interim agreement to be able to more fully develop that.
But we're still spending $15 million.
Yes, which will also be used to continue the design of those buildings.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin.
We own those design plans, yes.
Okay, so I just want to clarify in my own head. So, so basically, I understand we already have decided that these are the three next projects that we're going to be doing. And I, I kind of, I'm trying to like, kind of dumb this down for myself, really. So we're kind of like bundling, like insurance, right? Is that kind of what we're doing here? We're like bundling insurance. We're getting like a bundled cost. So because we're going to be doing the three projects in one, we actually get a discounted rate. We own this, basically, the architectural plans or whatever. So we own that. And, and essentially, this is not, we're not like voting on the 400, we're just voting on the 15 million to basically move the boulder forward, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and the only thing to add to your, your.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I got to think about things in my own way.
The thing to add to your bundled comment, so there, there are, because they'll be able to buy in bulk items that will apply to all three schools, that will be helpful to it as well.
That's why builders get a, yeah, a different price on, yeah.
A lot of the, a lot of the cost avoidance that we're talking about right now is just associated with not having to wait for inflation to get worse. And I don't think I fully closed the loop on this when we talked about it. So again, we mentioned there was a 9% inflation. I don't know that that's the case, but let's just use that as a number. If the 9% inflation is true and that continues, that's even worse for us.
Right.
The longer you wait, the more it costs.
Because it's going to get more expensive as we, because of course, if, if they see this is happening, and they've already given us a cost at what we originally agreed to, and now as it gets more expensive, they'll be like, hey, by the way, you see what's going on with inflation? So I guess, is that what you're saying to us?
Uh, yes, and there's a guaranteed maximum price
Okay.
that's a part of the PPEA.
Okay.
That, that would be known to all, and it would be part of the PPA prior to you choosing to vote.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson.
So just to clarify, I need to hear you say yes or no. Are we obligated to move forward this time next year when we get this and we have this in hand? Are we obligated to move forward?
So you say move forward. I'll say it a little bit differently.
Start building.
The school division is not obligated until the comprehensive agreement. That comprehensive agreement will require a vote by the school board next summer as briefed on Miss Ingram's slides.
All right, well, and you've already stated that we will be able to use these designs because we will own them later on if we have to postpone, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and if it comes back next, this coming September, that the community of Bayside does not want to move with, forward with Sixth Grade Campus separate from Bayside Middle, if that happens, would we go, come back? Could we come back and move on to the next high school? Or could one of those designs, I'm hoping that it can be, since Bayside and First Colonial are so similar, that we could utilize that design for First Colonial down the road since it's the next high school? I know I might be sounding like I'm getting ahead of myself, but we've already stated that we could use those designs down the road.
Correct. So you're talking about the potential use of a prototype?
Yes.
So those design, so similar footprint for the properties that are Bayside, First Colonial, Kempso. So those would be able to be used potentially.
Okay.
Again, I'll share, just like I shared with you a year ago, prototypes are typically most successful in cost avoidance when you're building multiple buildings in rapid succession. So we can't say for sure that there's going to be a huge cost savings associated with prototype designs, but it is an interesting opportunity, and this would provide us that opportunity to be able to see what a prototype would save us.
Okay, and one more question. And it's still putting a little bit of cart before the horse, but I still need to know this. Down the road, the plans are potentially for Princess Anne to be the very next high school built, correct? And potentially, we would be moving those students to a different facility during their construction. Are you stating that Bayside would be doing construction simultaneously?
No.
Okay, it just, that was the same builder.
Even under the PPA, it would not happen simultaneously.
Okay, all right. I just needed to clarify that. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, then. The motion's on the floor. So all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
And all opposed, please show a raised hand.
And we have two nays.
And I abstain.
Thank you. So the motion...
And my abstention is because I do not vote on any large construction projects with general contractors because I'm a subcontractor.
Thank you. So Madam Chair, the motion did pass. We have eight ayes, two nays, and one abstention.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Lanetti, I'm allowed to have discussions about this. I just don't vote on it.
You don't, you have not identified an actual conflict here. You've chosen, which has been your practice for as long as you've been the board, not to involve yourself in construction contracts, there's no question. But you don't technically have a conflict in this issue that you've identified, so you can't participate in the conversation.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the final action agenda item of the evening, the Laskin Road Annex update on the disposition of our school board-owned property. And again, Mrs. Ingram.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Before, we do need a motion and a second.
Thank you, yes. Okay, so a motion to approve for discussion, Mrs. Holtz, and a second, Mrs. Franklin.
Okay, now the floor is yours. Thank you again. Good evening, Ms. Rye, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. So on the agenda tonight...
Oh, Ms. Ingram, we're going to read the resolution first.
Resolution authorizing First Amendment to the purchase agreement for the sale of school board property located at 1413 Laskin Road. Whereas on April 26, 2022, the school board authorized the sale of school board property located at 1413 Laskin Road to the Franklin Johnston Group Management and Development LLC or its related development company, TFJG Canopy LLC, here and after TFJG Canopy. Whereas the school board and TFJG Canopy entered into a purchase agreement in the form attached to the resolution adopted by the school board on April 26, 2022, which included a concept plan for the proposed development attached as Exhibit B, the original Exhibit B, to that agreement. Whereas TFJG Canopy has informed the school board that they wish to substitute an updated concept plan, the new Exhibit B, that includes proposed additional restaurant usage on the property, and has requested the school board to enter into a First Amendment to the purchase agreement in the form submitted with this resolution to amend the agreement to use the new Exhibit B to reflect these changes. And whereas the school board has considered the First Amendment and finds that substituting the concept plan shown on the original Exhibit B with the concept plan shown in the new Exhibit B is consistent with the goals of the transaction described in the purchase agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved that, one, the school board hereby approves amending the terms of the purchase agreement as described in the First Amendment, including the concept plan shown in the new Exhibit B; and, two, the school board authorizes the chair or designate to execute the First Amendment and any and all documents desired and necessary to amend and complete the above referenced transaction as amended, so long as they have been determined to be legally sufficient by the attorney for the school board.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Ingram, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again to everybody. So again, on the agenda for action tonight is an update to the Laskin Road Annex disposition, which has come about with additional work done by the developer related to rezoning of the property. This is not uncommon in the development process to see changes as developments go through. Looking at the disposition schedule, you can see that, you know, over the course of the last several months, we had, after having a RFP process with the city, we have discussed and had public hearings on this item, the disposition of Laskin Road Annex, for, looked at surplus property and to retain the funds of the purchase agreement for $7 million to the school board. Right now here, we're at the blue item that you see on the board in front of you. So we are reviewing Exhibit B, which was included in the original purchase agreement, and looking at a new Exhibit B, which would be an amendment to the purchase agreement. After that would take place, we would have the property look for rezoning through the Planning Commission and then City Council from August to September 2022. And then closing of sale would be 420 days after the signed original agreement, which was May 4th. So we're looking into late June, but the developer also has an earlier option to close and also has rights to demolish the property at their own risk as well after going through the rezoning. So again, in front of you right now is the property that we call Laskin Road Annex. It's roughly 12.41 acre site at 1413 Laskin Road. And again, the approved purchase agreement is a result of a joint city and schools RFP process that considered the benefit for not just Greater Virginia Beach, but also the Hilltop SGA. This included the participation of school board member Sharon Felton and City Council member Guy Tower, with offers received in August 2021 and reviews conducted in October 2021. So in front of you now is the original Exhibit B concept plan that was approved with the original purchase agreement. Again, mixed-use development, open trail system, sensitivity to the environment and surrounding neighborhood are all in alignment with the strategic growth area at Hilltop. So was approved by the RFP process and then again entered into a purchase agreement with the school board in May. This is the new concept plan. You can see it's been a little bit more refined as they've done their due diligence for the site. One of the main changes they have on here on the northwest corner of the site is an additional restaurant. Still retained our open space trail system throughout the project, a nice healthy environmental buffer to the surrounding area neighborhoods. Also, when we had discussed this earlier, I was asked about public input. Just so you know, Planning Commission did send additional letters out the end of July advising all neighboring properties that the site was up for rezoning. This was in addition to the original letters that they sent. They also described ways to communicate with the planners, speak at the Planning Commission and City Council meetings on any concerns they might have. Also asked, related to the change in this project with a light at Wynwood Drive, there are some other developments going on in this area to the properties over to the west. So traffic engineering is still reviewing any need for any traffic changes here. Those would not just solely be attributed to this site, however, if that was to be put in place. Okay, I'm with that. I can, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
We'll start with Mrs. Hughes.
Actually, this one might be for Kami instead. It was just about the language in the resolution. It said First Amendment.
Yeah, at first, don't think free speech, not for earlier in the meeting. This is the first, we have a proposed agreement that you already agreed to, so we had to change it slightly on this one. So this, we are amending it in that sense, and the only amendment is going to be the addition of this particular or substitute of this, so...
Okay, well, I was just concerned when we say we're approving the First Amendment. More may be coming that we might not know about at this point that would be automatically approved based on this. So my question is, if there are any other amendments, it will come back to us, correct?
Correct.
That was the question. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Manning.
Well, I just want to thank you for bringing this back to us. I don't know that this technically had to come back to us. We talked about that. But in the spirit of transparency, I'm so glad that you did to give the public another opportunity if they wanted to give input on this. And just want to be clear to, on this issue, usage, we don't control that as the school board. That's a City Council issue. So if citizens do have a concern about the usage of this, they should contact City Council, correct?
Correct, ma'am. The applicant is still to go through the Planning Commission and City Council process for rezoning. And then along with any other, all other development processes, they go through site plan review, building permits, and things of that nature.
Yeah, and we're just doing this to kind of be ultra-transparent so that the public can give input to City Council if they want.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, it looks like we're ready to vote. All in favor, a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes.
All opposed, a raised hand or an abstention?
I have an abstention. Through my work with the Neptune Festival, my involvement, I know Taylor Franklin, so I will abstain.
Thank you. So Madam Chair, the motion did pass with 10 ayes and one abstention.
Thank you. That brings us to committee reports. So who would like to start? I know it's the summer, but we do have committees meeting, so...
Mrs. Franklin. Chair Rye, I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask about...
Liaisons are included in this.
Okay.
The human rights commission, go ahead.
So I have an ongoing conflicting class that I teach on Thursday night, so I can only attend one hour of the HRC meetings. And I'm not sure, and I know Ms. Holtz also has a conflict, so is there anybody, it's a great committee. Is there anybody that would be, oh, once a month every Thursday? Yeah, Thursday from four to, sorry, once a month, Thursday, four to six.
So you're looking for an outright replacement at this point?
Well, I don't mind being the backup, but again, it's, but I think we need a different primary, for sure. Because I just feel like I'm not doing justice.
Why don't we have anybody interested, let me know.
Same time as our discipline committee. I don't want to get caught in...
Okay, so anybody interested, let me know. And Jennifer and I will remain, Mrs. Franklin and I will remain in contact about that.
Yes, okay, thank you.
The Governance Committee with its first meeting in September will be meeting again with outside council for the third piece of legal councils, our new legal council, the job evaluation, so that'll be on the agenda for September. Okay, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just had to report that the PPMC did meet on Monday at 1:00. A new chair, well, we had a vote in a chair, which I was voted back in, thank you to my colleagues, Ms. Franklin and Mrs. Anderson. And the meeting was very robust, and hopefully that information will be coming to our board concerning the new administration and all of the wonderful and robust educational extension they're doing at Renaissance. Cannot wait for that workshop to come, so that you can hear the extensive and evolving and newness of Renaissance. Thank you.
So if I may segue back, because I felt this was an oversight on my part in July, but we, our new legal department, Office of Legal, what is the official title, Mrs. Lanetti? Department of Legal Services was effective July 1. Now, we didn't, there was no band or chorus, but it kind of, when it, you know, after a year of planning, it all just kind of happened under the radar, but I wanted to remind my colleagues of that. And Mrs. Lanetti, can you just briefly share where you stand with your staff and all that?
We are, we have the two open positions that we had to wait till we started over here with the schools. And we were doing, starting one interview session maybe on Thursday, and then probably the paralegals will be next week. So we hope to get those filled. And we have transitioned and gone through orientation and everything that every other employees had to do for the last couple of weeks. So we're learning your system, so we're up and running. And as I remind people, that email is not the VB.gov, so please do not send a VB.gov. Please send a VB Scholes email.
And some of the usual challenges with switching offices.
We actually switch offices. We just switch computer systems.
Appreciate that correction. All right.
Just a reminder of the PRC meeting on Thursday at 11:00, and it will be held here in the school board chamber.
Here in the school board chamber, or not in Einstein? Okay, thank you.
All right, final call. So it looks like that wraps things up for this evening. So we will call this meeting adjourned, and everyone have a safe travels home. Stay cool.